Three of you. Supervisor, Supervisor Sertie is telephonically participating?
Yes, Chairman. Supervisor Sertie.
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you.
Thank you. And so from that, I'll let Mr. Lou wanted to catch this with a couple of sentences before we get started.
Yes, good morning. Thank you, Chairman. I just wanted to mention there's a couple of categories that we're working on where these types of financing tools could be of value and benefit to the county. We broke it up into two different categories intentionally because today's category has more to do with the value of refinancing outstanding obligations. And then in the next month's work session, we will talk about the potential of financing new projects long-term that the county needs. So just two different sections, and today's section's more on the refinancing.
Okay.
Thank you, Chairman.
Yeah, thank you. Angie, we're on item number one and only item on the agenda. Ms. Woods.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. Angie Woods, Director of the Office of Budget and Finance. This morning, I have with me esteemed colleagues from Stifel, and they will be giving a presentation in regards to the refinancing options for existing debt and then some options for ASRS, CPP, and bond market updates. Mark.
Thank you, Ms. Woods. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good morning. I'm used to seeing a larger crowd in the back, but I guess at your work sessions. Please.
To start, Mark, just real quick, if they have questions, I'm just going to allow them to throw them out there as they come up, if that's all right?
No. Thank you. We appreciate that. I just, I met our new supervisor, Rich, over here, and had met him before, so it's nice to meet Rich and congratulating him on his, on his election. Okay, so as Leo and Angie said, we're going to slow this down a little bit. Lot going on in your county, one of the fastest-growing counties, of course, in the nation, as you know. We've had the privilege of working with the county for many, many years, doing some really cool things. And so we have a couple of things in this PowerPoint presentation. One, we're going to talk about a refinancing here in a moment. Rates have come down. I'm going to show you some, some bonds that were issued by the county back in '04 and '05. Time flies when you're having fun, and we think there might be an opportunity, markets permitting. Markets are a little volatile, as you know. Rates are kind of holding their own right now. So as myself and Omar talk about potentially going into the market, you know, in the next 90 days or so, bear with us on interest rates, right?
Yeah.
We're watching them every morning, of course, and we would only do a financing for you if you give us the green light to go, if we can only meet our objectives with a financing. Rates go up, you know, maybe we, we hold off. Rates go down, we're ready to go. So just wanted to kind of open it up with that. So I'll start with the refunding. I'm going to let my, my great colleague Omar Dagostani out of our Chicago office, who's one of the national pension experts in the country, and he's going to talk to you about, as Angie said, some ASRS unfunded liabilities the county has that we've chatted with you about before. So with this, let's just go to some outstanding debt. A little busy here, apologize for that. But if you go up on top, back in 2014, we did a $52.7 million new money transaction for the county. Go all the way down below, the purpose of those funds were to expand Hunt Highway. We did some public safety radio upgrades at the time, and the county did some Ironwood Drive improvements, and we did some improvements to the court system. All good? And so a lot of projects, and you're seeing this now, you know, $52.7 million, a lot of money, right? Boy, I tell you what, nowadays, it's $52.7 million for one project, isn't it? And I know, I know you've been kicking around some new money maybe in the future. It's just the inflationary cost of buildings are just a lot of money. Okay, so in 2014, we did the $52.7, and you can see in the yellow what our coupons were, what our interest rates were. Mostly 5%. You see those in the yellow? Those are coupons. We got a few three percenters in there. So if you go down below where it says average coupon, your average interest rate, if you will, for the 2014 transaction was about 4.5%. We just averaged all that. Simple math. Okay, you're a double-A rated county. You're a very strong credit-rated county, highly respected in the marketplace. We're double As. We're always going to see if we can move you up as best we can. When we go into the market, we'll be going through that process together, but just by as remember, you're a double-A rated county at the moment. So if you go to the call feature there a little bit, remember on our muni bond transactions, very common around the country to have about a 10-year carve-out. So when we issue the bonds, investors don't want their bonds called. So in 2014, we put a 10-year lockout on that, pretty common. So now we're in 2024, 2025, so now your bonds are now eligible to be refinanced again. So these are the ones we've been kind of watching. We're at the 10-year threshold. We got rates. We don't have COVID rates, right, guys and gals? Remember COVID rates? We had 2% money, didn't we? We love that. Now we're 3.5%, 4% money, bear with us. So that was that transaction. And then in '14, we did another refinancing for you to save a bunch of money back then. That's a little one we'll probably pick off. And then in 2015, you can see, we did about $39 million for some new money and refinancing for adult detention facility expansion, share of training facility, and juvenile detention projects. So those are, you know, $66 million, if you will, that we have identified as potential bonds to be refinanced at a significant savings to the county. Okay? So I wanted to give you that background. Okay, so we're thinking we can get you in the 3% range. Now, if you go down to the bottom there, if you don't mind, just real quick, your current cost of capital is a $4.59, call it a $4.60. We ran these, the new numbers, the new interest rates in the 340s. So we'd love to keep you in the low 3s. Maybe if we get a market rally, maybe we're high 2s. Bear with us. So by issuing new bonds in the 3s to take out old bonds at the $4.60, you can see here, just to make the math really simple, if you go to column six, we think the county could save about $3 million. This is budget savings of about $300,000 a year. So that would just be net, net savings associated with your $4.60 money down to your 3% money. We structured it for purposes of this meeting at level debt service, so we'll give you $300,000 back. It's kind of nice. We can, we can put your savings wherever you want it, but this is level per year. We're not extending the maturities. We know that's important to the board, and all these bonds will be paid off in 2035, roughly 10 years. On a present value basis, we put, we put the, the math in today, to today's dollars, you can see your savings about $2.6 million at the bottom of column seven, or 5% savings. Anything over 3% from a threshold metric standpoint is considered efficient. So we're above that metric as well. So that's all in all the simple math. And then this is a sensitivity analysis where, let's say, bear with me, rates drop by, by 30 basis points, right? Let's say that as we put this transaction together, it's going to take us 90 days to get the transaction put together. This, this is just a work session, as you know. And if rates were to drop, you can see how your savings goes up, right? 10 basis points, we get 2.8. 20 basis points, almost a quarter of a percent. On the 10-year portion of our bond, we get $3 million. I like that. Boy, can we get 30 basis points? I like that. Then we get 3.2 million. So we're about 2.5, 2.6 now, as I mentioned to you. All, all in all, good. If rates were to go up, you can see how our savings goes down, and we'll continue to keep staff and, of course, the board educated on where the market is and the savings to the county. So really, that's, you've done this before, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We've done our refinancings before. You're, we've done new money with you. You're pretty familiar with the process. This refunding is on our radar screen. We wanted to bring it to the county's attention for your consideration. So any questions on the refunding, and then I'll turn it over to Omar for the ASRS discussion.
Any questions, guys?
I don't. Appreciate that.
Other than, other than it's positive, so.
Yeah.
That's good news. Thanks.
Mr. Sertie, you good? Hopefully you can see the screen.
I guess, Mr. Chair, I do have one quick question.
I can, yes. There's a bit of a delay, but I'm watching.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Sertie. With that, with that, Mr. Chair.
Mark, real quick question, and we're talking about if we refinance this, it's only for 10 years. We're not doing it 20-year. We're just.
No, we're keeping it. We can shorten it to.
We're just shutting it down. Okay.
Right at the same, so.
Okay.
That's been your policy objective in the past.
Right, thank you.
Okay, very good. Omar, I'll turn it over to you.
One thing I heard there. I remember that. How random to save this bunch of money. I know. Yeah.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, Supervisors, and members of the Pinellas County team. It's a pleasure to be back here in front of you, and I'm here to talk about the ASRS CPP program. Now, as you will recall, we went in 2021, Leo and Angie and the team, and refinanced your liability for your PSPRS pension liability, the unfunded portion. And that has been a remarkable success and saving story to reduce the cost of funding your pension liability for PSPRS. ASRS has a program. As you know, it's a little bit different how your liabilities are calculated, and I'll go to the next page. Do I have a, oh, here it is. There we go. For ASRS, Pinellas, as you know, it is a cost-share plan, right? And it's one big liability, and the portion that is attributable to Pinellas County is .66, or 106, just north of 106 million. This is, you know, it is an unfunded liability, and with it, it carries a, a charge every year of 7%. And so the idea here is that we will take that 7% and refinance it with bonds as we did with the PSPRS financing in 2021. This program, and as you know, ASRS has achieved multiple sources of recognition in terms of getting the certificate of excellence from GFOA every year for the last 35 years. Their investment performance is regularly in the top quintile. It is off the charts. Mark and I often say, gee, I wish they could invest our 401K money. And, you know, you see that in terms of everything going on, in terms of their investment returns have well exceeded their assumed rate of 7%. On a historical basis, I believe it is just north of 8% is their historical performance.
So you're saying that's the way it's running right now?
Yes, that's correct.
If we know that's not what's happened in the past, that's why we're paying 7% on, in the rear, right?
So it's interesting, what their, their past performance, investment performance has been very good, Supervisor Goodman. The challenge for ASRS has been longevity. As people have lived longer, for every year that people, well, so think about this, over the last 20 years, longevity, if you're to look on a national basis, has increased about four and a half years. For each increase in one year of life expectancy, that equates to an additional unfunded liability of 4% to 5%, rough, rough order of magnitude. And so largely, ASRS, the reason that there is this unfunded liability, if you go back to 2000, they were fully funded, their earnings have been absolutely stellar throughout this whole period. That's not the problem. It's, it's been longevity has been the big driver of why there's an unfunded liability.
Wow. Never heard it that way. I didn't either. I always thought that it was the commitments that were made to, to give a certain level of guarantee, and that's one of the reasons why our, this particular fund has depleted because of those certain levels of guarantees that were given?
And.
We're not doing that anymore, I know that, right?
Right, that's right. And Supervisor, you're correct. You know, there were levels of benefit guarantees that were given, and those were funded, fully funded initially, but as people started living longer.
Yeah.
The cost of that benefit increased for each of those.
That's what's, and I think we have a new, new manager of the fund now, right?
So the administrator is Paul Mattson, and he was the CIO, and now he's been elevated to be the administrator for ASRS.
Okay, I see it.
PSPRS had the new manager.
Okay, okay, that's where I got confused. They had different managers.
And so PSPRS, I think the, the history is a little bit different. ASRS, their investment performance, if you look over the trailing 20, I believe it's just north of 8%. In fact, we have those statistics, oh, on the next page, in fact.
I told Rich I wasn't going to say a whole lot because I understand it, but I felt, felt like some of this stuff might be beneficial not only for Rich, but for, and I'm sure he's been brought up to speed, but I think for the public as a whole, is that why are, why is this all happening? Wasn't this funding properly to get us through all of this that we're going through? And we're paying 7% now on those in rears? I thought I heard you right?
That's right.
Okay, and, and the reason why we're looking at this is we're hoping to bring that percentage way down.
That's right.
From what I'm getting, okay.
That's right, and achieve savings in terms of how it is funded for Pinellas County's portion of the liability.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and I, I want to thank Supervisor Goodman for bringing that up, because I don't think you can turn on the news without somebody saying unfunded liability on pensions someplace along, you know, what does it really mean? And I appreciate the, the explanation, though.
No, and I mean, that, that has been the biggest driver. A secondary driver is they decrease the assumed earnings down to 7% and that has an impact. There, you know, there are a few other actuarial adjustments, but if you look at where does the lion's share of this liability come from? It is really from increased life expectancy. And, you know, look, I'm great, on behalf of all of us, I'm grateful for that, but it, it's not great for pension math.
Steve's liking that, just, just saying, yeah.
He's one of those longevities that you're talking about.
Aren't we all?
I'm the biggest problem.
But I, I will, I will say, and a little bit about my background, I lead our national pension practice, and I have done so nationally for 22 years. So I've worked from coast to coast. I've worked with all state systems, and I will tell you, we could list out all of the awards, but ASRS is amongst the very best state pension funds anywhere in the nation that I've ever met. Director Mattson and his team are, are first class, then, and the performance reflects that, both in terms of the investment performance as well as how well-administered it is, even the IT, you know, a lot of pension funds have, you know, like punch card type of computer systems, but ASRS actually has a lot of efficiency there, so it's, it's very well-run. And again, you know, it's, it's exogenous things that have driven this liability that now, you know, we're looking for an efficient way to manage. Thank you for the question, Supervisor. Are there other questions, or do we want to look at their historical returns?
Move on.
All right, thank you. Moving to page seven, we were talking about the trailing returns. And so if you look over the last one year, 9%. Over the last 10 years, it's 7.6%. And I think there's another statistic, it's not on the page, that it's, if you go back a little further, it's closer to 8%. But nonetheless, these are the benchmarks that they publish, and they regularly, if you look at the sort of benchmark returns over a long period of time, for 10 years, pension funds nationally with similar asset allocations earns 6.4%. ASRS out-earned them by 120 basis points and earned 7.6%. Now, another interesting fact I will share on investment returns, and Leo and Angie and Randy and the team had a chance to talk with Paul about this. They model prospectively, you know, it's great to look retrospectively at returns, but we all know that that's no indication of the future. ASRS does modeling to look at what do they think, what is the likelihood that they'll reach 7% over the next 10 years, over the next 20 years? And that is very close to 100, but they actually predict that it will be north of 750. That's what their, that's what their model says. You know, obviously, only the future will tell, but that is what they have shared.
Sounds like I need to be put more in it.
I know. This is what I, this is what I keep saying. So those are the returns. And so that gets to, you know, okay, so we have this liability, and on an accounting basis, it's at 7% every year that it's being charged. If you can refinance it as you did with, you know, so you're looking at other bonds, you can, and we took a very conservative scenario. We took relative, you know, I'd rather come in here with conservative savings and come back and say, hey, we outran that, rather than the other way around. I've done this for a long time, and I'm, I'm the last person to overpromise anything because that doesn't benefit any of us. So in this very conservative scenario, you'll see that we borrow for the 106 million, and we achieve savings on a present, on a cash flow basis of 54 million, on a present value basis of 13.2 or 12.4%. Now, that assumes, obviously, that, you know, all the assumptions contained within the actuarial report hold.
That's on this page, yeah?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Oh, thank you, thank you. I, I should have advanced the slide.
Yeah, I was trying.
Thank you for that, Supervisor. And so this, this is a relatively conservative calculation, and one of the things, you know, that you can do that is a little bit different than a PSPRS financing, is that you can take your benefit at any, any time along the way. So when we did this for Coconino County, they said, well, we want to have this for sort of acts of God. In, in their case, wildfire or mud, you know, all those type of things, if, if the county needed things above and beyond their cash reserves, that you would have this. And in fact, so, you know, right now, all of the savings is modeled to just grow and build over time, but if you had that type of act of God, that would be available. And within the confines of ASRS, it is available within 30 days' notice.
So, so if I'm hearing you correctly, all the savings and things that we currently would make, or that we would get, we would just actually re-put in reserves in an investment of some type to help on a rainy day?
Yes, that's right.
It's almost like a rainy day fund that we've, that we've been putting aside. I think our goal was 25% is what? Oh, well, I'm just being, I'm being overly zealous.
Big, piggy, big, 20%.
Okay, yeah, I, yeah, I just want to make sure that, as I think this through, it helps me a lot. I don't know about anybody else, but it helps me. Thank you.
So, you know, it is set aside in that way. However, it is flexible that if, if this body were to decide that there was a need that were to emerge at any time, you could do it with as little as 30 days' notice.
Yeah, I hope we never do that.
And again.
I hope, I hope we're never in a position we have to do that.
I know in my conversations with Coconino County, the same sentiment existed, and again, I think they're really looking more at things that are acts of God, if you would.
Makes sense.
So I will, this just breaks out the cash flow savings and compares the contribution offset to the bond debt service and shows the savings. And again, these are all in dollars thousand, obviously. Most of this is, is backloaded 2050 to 55, but again, that structure is flexible at the direction of Leo and Angie and the Supervisors here.
If I could just, Leo, real quick, being that this is the, what we're talking about, is this what we did the last time, when we refinanced the PCSR or whatever it is? BC? Hey, it's an acronym. I don't ever get them right.
Public Safety Retirement System.
Yeah, yeah, there we go, okay.
Yes, sir, it was, it was similar, but slightly different because the way that that pension system works has some different dynamics to it.
But we did finance it similarly for the savings, and we're benefiting from those savings today.
Okay, yeah.
This one that Omar was referencing, we'll have an IGA with the ASRS if we did this. And the flexibility of using the rainy day fund, which essentially they hold, is greater than in the PSPRS.
That's right.
Thank you.
So, one of the other things I wanted to talk about is, you know, obviously, the borrowing cost will impact savings, and like Mark was saying, you know, we're, we're only going to do this when the market makes sense. And if you look over the last year, we've seen movements in the rates markets of as much as 35 basis points in the course of a week. So the good news is, we have a whole underwriting and trading desk that can help us maneuver that and get the right moment there for Pinellas. I also think we are, we have an aggressive marketing plan to frankly tighten up our credit spreads, because to me, when we, when we take your bonds to market, you know, every basis point matters because that's, that's a lot of money that we're saving the taxpayers of, of the county. And so we're going to go aggressively market those nationally to get to sort of every pocket of demand to get you the lowest borrowing cost, so hopefully lower than we have on the page. The other sensitivity is earnings, and I, I want to be direct that, you know, the savings that we show are expected, and that's based on the actuarial, the 7%. Obviously, if the saving, if the earnings are greater than 7% over, you know, the course of this transaction, you'll have greater savings, and if they're lower, your savings would be lower. And I just wanted to demonstrate that, that if you were to have, we'll start with, let's say that we didn't earn the 7%, that we only earned 650 over 30 years, you would still have positive savings, but the savings would drop down to 7.919% or 7.464 million rather than the 13 million that we showed earlier. On the flip side, if you earn closer to what they've earned historically and what they're currently anticipating, the 750, you would see savings higher than we had shown earlier, and those, that would be 18.98 million of PV savings, or 67.29 gross, or 17.8% savings. So obviously, you know, you're not going to know the actual outcome until, you know, you get further out, but in terms of decision-making, that's sort of the range that you might consider. And I think that probably draws us to an end for the ASRS CPP refinancing. I appreciate the conversation and the questions. Are there other questions or comments? I love talking about it. I, I could talk about it for hours, but I know you guys have many other topics on your mind.
Thanks for bringing the ground, the cloud cover with you. From Chicago.
Supervisor Sertie, are you good?
I'm good, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions or comments at this time?
No, I'm good.
I want to, quick, so the interest rates that we're looking at right now, if we were going to go for this, is, where was that?
That, right now, is about a 5.8% with the savings that we showed you.
Hmm.
If I were, if you're to look at sort of the rate forecast, there is a, a thought that rates are going to come down in the next quarter or two.
It would seem so, yes.
That's, that's our expectation, and that's obviously what we're managing for. I had contemplated, you know, if you're to look for each 10 basis points of improvement that you see in the rates market or credit spreads, and I think we can actually crush both of those down a bit, I'd like to think we could at least take 10 basis points of credit spread right there, but for each 10 basis points that we pick up, it is worth 1.3% additional savings, or about another 1.4 million on a present value basis. So that if we saw, for instance, if we saw rates come down 30 basis points between what we showed and now, you would expect to see just about an additional 5% of savings relative to what we showed you.
Okay. So how long does it take you to structure all of this and, and kind of go into a holding pattern, it sounds like, until the market looks just right?
Well, you know, the, the good news is. Well, you know, the, the good news is, with, with your team, with Leo, with Angie, you know, there is, we go ahead and start, you know, assuming that we get the green light from you today, we would start drafting documents and have all of those ready. And then, you know, when we see the market move in the right way, I think we'd be ready to go in about a week. I'd say to get the documents and so forth, though, we have a whole schedule we could go through, but I would say call that about a month.
Because this is not agendized decision.
That's what I was going to ask. Yeah, I think that's where you were going.
Right. And I just want to be clear with that. So, but that gives me an idea of, you know, where it might get agendized at some point, and then how long would it take you to prepare meanwhile watching the market?
Okay.
You know, I.
Chairman, just wanted to ask. So you're looking about August is about what you're thinking right now?
No.
I mean, let me turn the schedule to Mark.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Vitello. Thank you very much on that. Let me just, I've got two slides, and then I'm going to get into the calendar, and I appreciate those questions, too. Okay, so this may be helpful for Mr. Vitello, being a newer member of the board. So when we do these transactions, as the board knows, we, we issue these revenue bonds of the county, the AA revenue bonds, very common for all counties to issue debt in this manner. And this is our, what we call our basket of revenues of the county that we pledge towards a revenue bond. Obviously, bondholders want to know what our collateral is, as you all know. So it's very strong, and we like to just remind the board of that. And you can see up on top, this is our basket. Your local revenues are very strong. Look, look at your 2324 numbers, about 40 million. Angie just gave us these numbers recently. So the local Pinal County economy, we're a largely a sales tax-driven state, aren't we? Other states are income tax, and other states are property tax from around the country. But I like to tell our clients, cities, towns, and counties, we're very much an economically-driven economic system here, where sales tax is a huge chunk of money for us. So let's call you 40 million.
Just for clarification, Mark, we don't have income, we don't have a sales tax.
We have a sales tax, but it's.
Transaction privilege tax.
TPT, thank you.
Yeah, just so, just so we're clear, people don't get worried about it. What, what, you know?
Our percentage is way lower than the cities and towns percentage.
It sure is. It sure is. And the counties, you're limited in what you can do on that. You have to live within your means, and it's, yeah, you're TPT. So you're half sent.
He wanted to make sure the public heard that.
Okay, 40 million, so good numbers, right? I mean, I like to look back, gosh, in 1920, you were 20 million. You know, it just goes to show, you all know the growth, and so... And then we have our state shared revenues, which we rely on, right? And then we have to take out our all-tax and our access numbers, see up there about 21 million a year. So then we net that out at about 45 million. We have, people are still buying cars. I hate writing that check every, every year, as you all know. You know, vehicle license taxes are expensive in Arizona. Your county collects 18 million a year. So that's a good number, and because you're growing and cars, at least at the moment, are still selling, that's a pretty good revenue stream. So call it 100 million, 103 million, I like to round in the 2324, kind of what we call the pledged revenues. So when we go out and do this investor presentation, as Omar mentioned, to bring investors into the county, fighting for every basis point, right? As we enter the marketplace, this is all good news for them. We know you're working on your, your 2526 budget. And then this is kind of our, our debt service. I won't bore you with all this, but this is kind of the debt service that we have within the county and your, your, your coverage ratios, which are all very, very strong. I guess as it relates to timing, hope that was helpful, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. That's just kind of a repeat of what we've done before. I wanted to share that with you. In terms of timing, we've talked to staff, Leo and Angie and Himanshu and the team, and Randy. And at the moment, we know, at the moment, there, there's potentially going to be another work session. Leo, maybe you can help me out with this, to discuss maybe some new money projects that are under consideration or that are on your five-year capital improvement plan. I know you've been involved in some of those discussions. Your county's growing, and of course, there's needs to, to build buildings and build projects. So I don't know really where we stand on that, but at the moment, we're scheduled, unless you, unless we're not going to do this, March 13th would be kind of our next work session. And that would be to have a thorough discussion about new money. Do you want to, if we're going to package this transaction, the refunding and the ASRS refinance, and if the county has an interest maybe in doing some new money, we would package them all together. And so Leo, are we still, I think, on for that or conceptually? Okay, he's giving me the head nod. And he's telling me to move on faster. So to answer your question, let's say there's interest in moving forward, and this is a work session, no action, and, and you can give us some direction, we can start to put in place all the background work that we do, as you know. We would come back on March 13th, about a month from now, talk about the new money, yes or no? And then we would proceed with a public hearing on April 30th, and we would probably come to the board at the May 28th to approve a resolution authorizing the projects. So that's, what are we, February, March, April? We're two and a half months out. And we're praying and hoping every day that market, all of these markets we talked about, the taxable market, the tax-exempt market, stay with us or maybe even improve. So I think we're a couple of months out. To answer your question on timing, and then we would probably be selling bonds in, you know, right after the Fourth of July, if markets permit. So I hope that answers your question in terms of globally where we may be going over the next three months.
So just out of curiosity, if things are really swinging that way, would you foresee maybe holding off another 30 days to see if it's going to drop a little bit more? If, if things are really starting to swing?
Yes.
And the economy is really starting to really show a nice upkick, would it be beneficial of maybe to wait 30 more days and see if it drops a little bit more? That's why I was saying maybe August.
Yes, to answer your question, yes. The beauty of how we do these transactions, we've done this for you before, is that once you approve it, or if you approve it on May 28th, you're going to delegate authority to staff to work with the team, to lock in interest rates at the most ideal time that we, to answer your question, because you're exactly right. We were ready to go right after the Fourth of July. We don't do anything that week because everybody goes on vacation, except us. And then we're ready to go that following week, but if we don't like what we see, or our numbers are not lining up, and we're, we're talking to staff, Leo and Angie and the team, we're going to totally hold off. And we will only go in the market when staff is, is happy with the numbers that we kind of shared with you today. So.
As long as inflation keeps coming down, that will keep going up.
Yeah. We need, we need inflation to moderate, right? And as you know, there's a lot going on in DC right now that's impacting, the policies out of DC right now are very much impacting our markets. Our markets are extremely volatile right now. And, you know, for example, are tariffs going to be inflationary or not? There's two sides to that story. So other policies coming out that will impact our markets, and we're just going to have to manage our way through it, working together as a team. So we'll keep you posted. Hope that answers your question. Mr. Mailer, one question. Would you rather talk about public pension mathematics or water issues in Arizona?
Both of which are very complicated and we're very involved with.
Well, let's just throw in the transportation mix as well. I forgot about that. Get it all together.
So we hope that was helpful. I wanted to thank Omar for coming out. He's really our national pension expert and a very innovative new program that ASRS implemented, the Contribution Prefunding Program, where you advance the money to go to work for you on behalf of the county. And the return on that is your offset credits that you can, you can save up and, and achieve the level of savings that he mentioned.
And not only that, I mean, that's a complete lump sum that's going into that account that we're not paying interest on, number one. And the second thing is, is that's the lump sum that's earning money on.
That's right.
So, I mean, when you look at it, it's beneficial all the way around. So. Yeah, win-win-win-win. You're in there.
Leo, that's it. Anything on your end? And we appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Supervisor Sertie, you good?
I'm good also.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. We're adjourned.